Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Hingham League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for School Committee. My name is Elizabeth Foster-Nolan. I am a trained moderator through the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts and am currently a member-at-large and a director for the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts. While I grew up in Hingham and was born there, I live in Weymouth, and I cannot vote for you in the June 27 election. Just want to make sure that you understand that. As you know, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support any political party or candidate. The goal of this forum is to educate the voters of Hingham in advance of the election. I will start the forum by explaining some procedures, and each candidate, you should be aware of these, but for the public, we like to make sure they understand how we're going to run this evening. You will have one minute for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement. Then each of you will have two minutes to answer each question. There is no rebuttal time, as this is an informational forum and not a debate. Please put your microphone on mute when you're not speaking. Opening statements will be done in the order each candidate appears on the ballot. Questions will be done in a rotating order based on a lottery that was done earlier tonight by the Hingham League of Women Voters. Closing statements will be in the reverse order of the opening statements. The timekeeper will prompt you when you are close to the end of your allotted time, and if you are finishing a statement, I will say that's fine, but please wrap up when you see the stop card. If you continue speaking after the stop card, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. As you all know, in this brave new world, we are recording this on Zoom. There will be a link to the video on the Hingham League of Women Voters website. The forum will also be rebroadcast on the local cable channel, and the forum will be available on the Linden Ponds in-house network. You will be notified when that is all going to happen. The turnaround time, we don't know, but there will be no editing of the content of this video. It will be straight through. There will be some slides added, some names added, and perhaps at the beginning and the end, but no editing of the content will happen at all. So with the rules out there, we will start with the opening statements. And again, you have one minute, and we'll start with Ms. Air.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum. You know, the work that your organization does is so vital to our town and our democracy, and it's really something that inspires my own civic engagement, so thank you. I'd also like to thank the other two candidates, Stephanie and Jen, for joining this race. Having been in your shoes three years ago as a first-time candidate for elected office, I know how hard it is to take this very public step, but I promise you, it is worth it, and if this puts you at ease at all, I am also nervous about tonight, and I've done this before. So the one thing I was thinking about the league is that it exists because that no matter how much progress we make, there's always still work to be done, and I think that's the same thing for schools, and that's one of the big reasons that I'm running for reelection for the school committee. The last three years have seen a lot of changes in the public schools, new leadership, new curriculums, and now, of course, new learning due to COVID-19. And serving on the committee for the last three years, the last two as the chairperson, I've learned much on how to navigate through changes and challenges, and I really would be honored to be reelected to continue that work to support the public schools.
Thank you. Ms. Benham?
Thank you. I want to thank the members of the League of Women Voters for organizing this remote event tonight. As a native of the South Shore, I have lived in Hingham for 13 years with my three children. My children attend Hingham Public Schools with one each in elementary, middle, and high school. I graduated from Boston University, and then I became a special education teacher, serving students with moderate to intensive special needs. In addition to my past work, I've held a variety of leadership positions, including PTO president at South Elementary, elected member at school council at the Hingham Middle School, and class parent at the Hingham High School. Through my work within the Hingham community, I have enjoyed working alongside a diverse group of volunteers, students, educators, and community members. Hingham has a strong school system, and I want to use my experience to continue to build on that support and support our students, educators, and town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gertz?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for doing this. I appreciate it, and thank you to the other candidates who are running. It's an honor to run against you both. My name is Stephanie Gertz. I moved to the South Shore in 2006, originally to Hanover, where I was on the Hanover School Committee. When we moved to Hingham, it was a logical choice to look at the school committee here. My husband has been co-clergy of the temple in Hingham since 2004. We have two children who currently attend PRS, but my daughter will be stepping up to middle school in September. I currently work as a paraprofessional in Cohasset Middle High School. We're a coordinated program for students who are transitioning back to school after extended absences, so next year, the whole school will be in my room. But seriously, students who work in my resource room range from students with broken bones that have kept them out of school, students with concussions who are not always able to be in the classroom for the full day, students who are school avoidants, and my room is the first step back to students who have anxiety disorders and need a safe place. I have a strong background in education. I earned my PhD in education from the University of Virginia. I studied what works and what doesn't in education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gertz. We will now move on to the question and answer portion of our forum. Reminder, you have two minutes for these questions, and you will see the questions on the screen for easy reference. And we will start with Ms. Gertz with the first question. What would you say are the top three issues facing the Hingham Public Schools in the next several years?
So the first one almost goes without saying. It's the budget. When I pulled papers in January, it was a very different world, and I had a lot of creative ideas for the budget. We're now looking at entirely different financial realities, so I don't know if those ideas would come into play my first year, but hopefully in subsequent years. We need more money in the schools. I don't think we can get more money from taking it from other departments, so we need more money in the town. And so my first priority will be to look at where we can get more money. Again, this was my first priority in January. I honestly don't know if this makes sense right now, though it will hopefully later. For instance, I was going to look at things such as increasing a restaurant tax, clearly ridiculous now. South Shore country club fees, clearly not something I can look at now, but I wanted to look at different ways we could raise fees to generate more revenue. One of the ideas that I had the most optimism about was different ways that we could rent out our facilities and the schools. Again, during COVID-19, until we have a vaccine, we're not letting other people into our facilities. However, I'm hoping that long-term, these will be viable options. So the top issue is clearly the budget. In terms of other issues we have, one of the things that's a newer issue, I think, that's somewhat related, that is entirely related to the pandemic, is how we look at absences. Right now, our absence philosophy, we didn't want folks just to not come to school. We had a stricter, in the direction where we're going to err, was having sick people come to school so that they wouldn't, slackers, wouldn't be able to just miss school. We're going to have to reverse that policy. I see I'm almost out of time, so I'm going to not fully explain that, I'm afraid, and go on to the third issue, which is how I would like to look at character development in the school and how we want to make the schools a safe place for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benham?
Thank you. Sorry about that. Apologize.
That's okay.
So the top three issues facing the Hingham Public Schools over the next three years, obviously, I would start with the first one being returning our students to school in the fall. It's critical that we protect the integrity of our schools and the recovery and aftermath of this pandemic. We want to return those students to school in a safe learning environment. We need to adapt our teaching styles and develop innovative techniques while providing professional training to our teachers on how to return into the classroom if they need extra support in regards to that. We need to comply with the evolving public health regulations that have been set forth from DSC and the state and the CDC, and we need to do all of this in a fiscally challenging situation, which leads me into the second one, which would be the budget. We don't yet know the full financial impact of COVID-19 on the town, state, and federal budgets, and we need to ensure that we work together in putting students first and delivering a high-quality education. Finally, I think over the next three years, and this is always my top priority, is especially now with COVID-19, is we need to be ready to address the social and emotional consequences of the school closure in March, in addition to the social-emotional program that we've been working on with the younger students. We need to continue to build on that, and even more so based on everything that's happened in the past three months. We need to make sure our students have the resources and the support that they need within our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Air?
Thank you. Sadly, it's hard to pick just three top issues that are facing the public schools in the next several years, but I would say that the first issue are transitions, both internally at the schools with a new superintendent, and really, when you think on it, a very new leadership team, new leadership at the high school, new leadership at Foster School, Plymouth River School, new director of student services. We have a lot of new leadership in our district. I'm proud to say that I was on the committee when we hired a lot of those folks, and the transitions, while they have been very smooth and the talent is top-notch, there are a lot of challenges just when you bring in a new leadership team. I think the sort of 1A, 1B is the external transitions of our students and our staff coming back to our schools in 2021. At this moment in time, we don't even know what school is going to look like in the fall, so the transition back to school in the fall is going to be of utmost importance. I'm very excited to be part of Dr. Austin's team that he's putting together for the recovery plan on bringing the kids back. I think the second big challenge is going to be budgets. You know, it's been said by both Stephanie and Jen, it's going to be tougher and tougher every year. The budget gets tighter and tighter, and the fiscal landscape ahead looks very rocky, so that will be a challenge. And I think the third issue facing the public schools is we really do need to be focused on equity for our students. Our students have multiple needs. They have social-emotional needs, they have financial needs, they have learning needs, and we really have to be focused on that, and that is one thing that the committee is definitely focusing on for the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and Ms. Benham, we'll start with you. "The school committee regularly refused tuition rates charged for programs such as Kids in Action and full-day kindergarten. It also does so for fees charged for high school programs such as athletics and extracurricular activities. Could you share your views on public schools charging parents for programs?"
Sure. I'll be happy to. I think that the programs that we are charging for our families, specifically the extracurricular activities for sports and then for activities after school, for example, in the middle school, we have an activity fee, and that would include students who stay after or who partake in the drama plays, who partake in after-school activities. I think those fees are reasonable, and in terms of our fees for Kids in Action, I think those are reasonable as well. I think Kids in Action is a wonderful program. They do provide a service, and the fact that the students can drop off their students in the morning, and then they can stay after school, and I actually would like to see that program expanded so that we can accommodate more students in that program. I think it's something that our parents really rely on and would like to see that expanded. And then more fees in terms of, for example, school sports, I think all those fees, considering we're going to be having budget constraints, I think I wouldn't increase the fees. I think they're reasonable where they are, and I think we get a lot of good services using those fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Air?
Thank you. So this is, it's an interesting question, because today I actually was at a new school, a new private school that is looking to open in Hingham, and the school committee asked to approve new private schools moving into town, and it was an amazing location and amazing programming, and I said, oh, I'm just curious, what is the tuition? And they said, oh, it's about $50,000, $55,000 a year. And Dr. LaBillaud and I looked at each other and said, wow, we could do a lot at Hingham Public Schools if we could spend $50,000, $55,000 per student. So I hate that we charge anything for our, for programming at our schools, particularly kindergarten and particularly Kids in Action, which is a program that I took advantage of when I, my children were in school as a working parent, and I loved that program. But the reality is that we, as a town, our per pupil spend is quite low, and while we do have a more than fair percentage of the budget allocated to our schools, the problem remains that it is just simply not enough money to fund all the programs that we would like to fund for our students, and we have to focus the dollars that the taxpayers and the state and the federal government provide to fund the compulsory pieces of the education that we are required by law to provide. So the things like kindergarten, which shockingly in Massachusetts is not compulsory, Kids in Action, sports programs, drama programs, those are all things that we, as a school district, believe in with all of our hearts, and we want to keep them going, and we want to keep them robust for our students. Unfortunately, in order to do that, we do have to pass some of that cost along to our parents. But again, if we could fully fund them all, I would be the first one to vote for doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Gertz?
Thank you. I'm okay with us charging for, the philosophical point of charging parents for programs. I would like to see us offer as many and even more programs than we currently offer. I'd like to see our before-school and after-school programs expanded. I'd like to see some of our extracurricular activities expanded, so I'm okay with charging for those programs. However, I think no child should ever not be able to participate in a program, and I think I've thrown my negatives in there too often, so I'm not sure how I came out there, but all children should be able to participate in every program. So while it's fine to charge for the programs, we must also have funds set aside so that any child can participate in a program. So if a child wants to go to Kids in Action, if they want to go to the drama club and the family can't afford that, then that's something that we have to do, and whether that's something out of the school committee budget, of the school's budget, or whether that's something the PTO or the AGF funds, no child, all children should be able to attend any program. So as I said, with the realities of our budget, I can't see us being in a place in the foreseeable future where we could not charge for programs, and I'd love to see the programs and our options expanded. However, we also, along with that, need to make sure that we have funds in there available so that all children can attend any program they want to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Ms. Air. "With climate change in mind, how might the school committee continue to address transportation, buildings, school curriculum, and public communication?"
I'm so sorry. Figure that out for the next time. Thank you. That question is so timely, because not only for, do we need to be now concerned with climate change, but I think there's also this whole post-COVID school reopening and the decisions we're going to have to be making on the facilities that will be impacting transportation, what the buildings look like, some of our curriculum, and our communications. So there are ways that we can address this, and we have been taking a lot of items under consideration through our policies, through our school committee policies. We can use the policy subcommittee and this full school committee to begin the work of enhancing our policies to ensure that we are limiting the use of plastics in our schools, that we are making sure that our buses and our vans are environmentally friendly. We can ensure that when we are using communication, that we are using electronic communication as much as we can and reducing our use of paper and ink cartridges. So there are many things that we can do as a school district. Many of those are operational in nature, and those are the purview of the administration and the buildings themselves, but the school committee itself is and will continue to be putting forth policies that will help us limit, again, plastics, ensure that we're getting the right type of transportation vehicles, and making sure we're heating our buildings properly and using the newest technologies we can, particularly when it comes to the Foster School, potential rebuild at the Foster School with the MSBA support. We have a great opportunity there to make that a green school and really bring that up into the 21st century for the environment.
Thank you. Ms. Gertz?
Thank you. When I was on the Hanover School Committee, we also built a new school, the Hanover High School, and at that time, their technology has probably far exceeded, but we really took time to put in some new environmental advances, whether it was from window shades to toilet flushes, so that the building was much more environmentally friendly. So when we have a new building, we're going to have a lot of opportunity to do things, but even in our old buildings, in terms of that, we can also, I've noticed so much coming from my own children in terms of what they want to do to make the environment friendly. So we can even encourage contests at the school. Money saved through using less plastic, using less paper, using less ink, money saved can go back to the school for other things, and I would like to see us do more things like that. As Michelle said, I think it would be great, we're going to have policies from the top down that will say we need to be better about the environment, we need to conserve our resources, but I think we can do a lot within the schools and have the schools be part of the solution, what works for each school in terms of where can we reduce paper, what plastic can we reduce, et cetera, as we go through. Certain things are just going to change, I think, from the pandemic, whether our cafeterias are going to look completely different in September. They may not look completely different a year from September, but some of those changes will stay in effect, and I think it'll be exciting to see what happens, and there'll be things that we can introduce and foster, and maybe those can spread throughout the district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benham?
Thank you. Well, I think with, in terms of addressing transportation, I think that will be a challenge under COVID-19, because we may need to increase more buses, but I'll move on to the high school. I think the kids at the high school, they're taking a lead with composting. They're really working hard on that. I think it's a great program that they have. In terms of, I mean, with Foster coming up, a new Foster coming up with the talk, there's many ways that we can use that school to reduce energy costs, and in addition to Foster, we could add solar panels on other buildings around the school to help reduce the energy, heating the school via geothermal fields, and then we could even sell that energy back and bring in some more revenue. We could have more windows for natural light, weather stations. I think it would be wonderful, you know, to be a 21st-century school. Technology is so important with everything coming up, and I think we need to be mindful and use our best practices to investigate how we can save money and address climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to question four, and we will begin with Ms. Gertz. "When the schools were shut down, teachers and students were launched into emergency remote learning. It is a strong possibility that remote learning will happen again in the future. What resources are needed for Hingham Public Schools to build on this experience in order to support students in the next phase of remote learning?"
Thank you. Michelle mentioned earlier the response recovery team. I'm honored to be part of that team as well as a parent ambassador, so one of the first things I want to do is talk to the parents and find out from the parents what they need. What has been obvious to me as the parent of two elementary school kids is how much I've become the co-teacher, and we need to talk to the parents first to see what kind of training, because when remote learning happens at home, it means that parents are in charge of school, whether they're hands-on or not, and so we need to find out, what do the parents need to do this? For instance, I'd like to see more professional development for the parents in terms of the technology tools, more walking through, so we're not surprised. And so when our kids are coming to us with Google Classroom issues, we know how to answer them. So one of the things we need to, resources that are needed, is we need to involve the parents and teachers together and work out more collaborative teams, what's going to work for the parents and for the teachers to work through on this together. Again, the teachers and parents have always been partners, but it's partners in a whole different way with this remote learning. And I found that my third-grade math skills are not as strong as I would like, but that's another story. We need to work on technology. Again, some of this was because we didn't plan for it, right? I'm not faulting anyone. Who could plan for it? You left your desk on March 12th and found out you weren't coming back, and then you weren't coming back, and then you weren't coming out, and then you were out for the whole rest of the year. So we're already in better shape, right? Because we're going to know that there might be remote learning. When teacher plans are developed for the year, there's going to be, the same way you develop a sub-plan, the teachers will be developing plans that say, okay, this is what we can do remotely, and this is what needs to happen in the classroom. So things are going to happen that way. I know in the religious school classes that I teach after school, that's exactly how I'm doing it, is I'm keeping in mind what has to happen.
Thank you. Ms. Benham?
Thank you. We're living in challenging times, and within the next year, our school will have a different landscape if we are going back to remote learning. We need to be ready to address, again, the social-emotional consequences and with staying Sorry, excuse me. Just lost my train of thought. The current, I just lost my train of thought. The current school closures have teachers and students facing unique learning challenges. One hope of mine is if we are home again, is to have more innovative technology involving best practices, involving the students' needs, such as foot classrooms. We need to be mindful of our special education students and how we can integrate more support for them within the home, and how we can work together to deliver the best possible education for all of our students. Technology is a big factor. I think we'll need to invest in more Chromebooks for all of our students. I know it's a challenge for families if they have, say, you have three kids in a family. It's a challenge. If they only have one device at home, they're going to need more than one device if we have more synchronous and asynchronous learning going home. So I think we would need to implement more funds to go towards that technology.
Thank you. Ms. Air?
Thank you. Yeah, when March 12th came, I remember speaking with Dr. Austin, and he was debating about whether or not to close schools for a day or two, and so he had decided that, after much consultation, that he was going to close schools on Friday, March 13th, and maybe that Monday, and then that Sunday, Governor Baker made that decision for us to close them for a couple of weeks and then a lot of weeks after that, and it has certainly been a challenge, because it was just not something that frankly, anyone was prepared for. Employers weren't prepared for it, schools were not prepared for it, the government wasn't prepared for it. It was a lot. It was a lot to, to jump into. And to this great question, it was the Emergency Remote Learning Plan. So going forward, because we know school is going to be different, at least the good news is we have some base under us that we can build off of. And the things that we have recognized that we need in the Hingham Public Schools is we need to continue to think about equity, right? And equity in technology, food, feeding students, ensuring the needs of our special education students. We need to ensure equity in all aspects of the education. Every child and every family is dealing with this differently. And that is every day in the Hingham Public Schools, one of the things that we have to deal with is that we have over 4,000 individual students who need to be taught and cared for individually. And that's a lot easier to do when they are in your buildings, but what can you do when they're outside the buildings? So professional development for teachers, for students, for parents. We need employers who are going to support parents who need to stay home and care for their children and, to Stephanie's point, help them learn. And to Jen's point, to help them stay socially and emotionally connected to their peers and to their classmates. So I think the resource that we need are, we need the technology, we need the professional development, and we need to at all times be cognizant of the equity of distribution of learning.
Thank you. We will now move on, you'll be happy to know to your last question before closing statements. And we will start with Ms. Benham. And the last question is, how do you propose to promote, promote communication transparency and shared goals between the school committee and school department and the Board of Selectmen and the municipal side of government?
So I propose to promote with communication. We need to have strong communication with our families and with our administration. It's imperative that we listen to the ideas of our families as well as administration. The, the role of the school committee is, is important. We need to be, the school committee has to be mindful of what their role is here. The school committee's role is, you know, approving the school budget and developing policies for all the districts. And all those responsibilities are crucial for success for Hingham Public Schools. And I think the most important role of school committee is developing policies to achieve, you know, our student achievement. And the best way that we can do that with all the departments is having great communication between ourselves, parents, school committee, and the selectmen, for example.
Thank you. Ms. Air.
Thank you. One thing that I think has been a positive that has come out of this COVID-19 stay-home order is the engagement that we have seen from the community. By being able to participate in meetings via Zoom from the comfort of your living room or your kitchen, I think has really been a boon to our community. The last few school committee meetings that we have had, we have had well over 100 participants. As a matter of fact, the first Zoom video meeting we had, we actually had to call Zoom and get an increase in the number of attendees that we could bring into the meeting because we had capped out, I think, at our limit of 100 participants. So I think that one thing that the school committee wants to promote going forward is being able to continue having these types of meetings that we can do remotely and get as much participation we have between the community, the school committee, the other town departments, Board of Selectmen. It is vitally important that we all are communicating regularly, that we are sharing in not only the resources of the town, but the goals of the town. At the last town meeting, we made sure that a school committee member was represented on the town's master plan. And we have spoken with the Board of Selectmen and other municipal areas of the town government to ensure that the school committee always has a voice on, on matters pertaining to anything to do with the town in the same way that we have made an effort, particularly over the last three years since I've been on the committee, to be really good ambassadors and to really open up the lines of communication. We don't always agree on everything and we don't always have the same perspectives, but we have, over the last three years in particular, is developed a really strong collaborative working relationship with the Board of Selectmen, the town, and, and all the municipal units of the town government.
Thank you. Ms. Gertz.
Thank you. One thing that's clear to me is that everybody on the school committee, the school department, the Board of Selectmen, and the other, the municipal side of the government, everybody cares about the town of Hingham and wants to see the best of it. So I would like there to be a weekly, regular meeting. It could be over Zoom, so people could do it hopefully one day from their desks, if not from their living rooms or their cafés. And to talk, I think that's the best way, that there be a weekly sort of steering committee of all those folks with representatives of all those folks always talking to each other. It's going to be helpful in times of crisis when we have to make a significant budget things. But also what will be helpful in non-terms of crisis, building that relationship so that when we come to sticky points, we have a trusting relationship and we all know where we're going forward. There's a separate question as to how we'll communicate out of that. And I think that's also valid because communication is, is, I, I think we need more and better communication at all times. But I think it's critical that all this, all the governing bodies of the town speak to each other and know each other. Because I know we're all operating from wanting the best for Hingham. And so rather than fighting against each other, it's great for us all to work together. And I think really the most effective way to do that would be if we have a weekly meeting. It could be casual, just to go through what's, what's the top thing on your agenda this week. And it could be sort of a weekly check-in on what's going on. And I think that will help us in terms of crisis when we all know each other and have that good working relationship going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gertz. We will now move on to closing statements. Just a reminder, we're back to one minute for each of you. And the closing statements will be in the reverse order of your opening statements. So Ms. Gertz, you are up for your closing statement.
Okay, that was a lot of talking. I feel like I have three minutes in our room now. Okay. So I'd like one of your two votes for school committee. It's a different world now than when I pulled papers in January, but the basic goals are the same. I want the schools to be the best that they can be. One of the things I studied in my graduate program at the University of Virginia was I studied what works and what doesn't in education. That is the same lens that I bring to my job, to homeschooling during the pandemic and to my past work as a school committee member. And it's the same lens that I plan to bring to the Hingham School Committee. We will have to be more creative when we think of the budget. We will have to make sure that we are taking care of the students and the staff's emotional health when they come back in September and always. And most importantly, we must make sure that our children feel safe at school. I alluded to it very briefly in my answers in terms of the issues that are facing the school. I think it is critical that our students feel safe and comfortable at school, that we need to provide that space for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenham.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight and to all those who are watching at home. As an educator and parent leader, I want to set new goals for our school district and serve as a voice who represents the values and beliefs of our community. My main priorities are regarding STEM readiness, equal opportunity for success in the classroom, program growth in areas such as the fine arts. And then finally, and the most recent due to COVID-19 is, with everything that's been going on, we really need to be ready to address the social and emotional consequences of the school closure by making sure that all of our students have the resources and support they will need when they return. I'm fully aware of the hard choices that the school committee will be facing this year and the years to come and promise to do the research and make decisions that are in the best interest of our students. Please reach out if you have any questions and I ask for your vote on June 27th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Air.
So sorry, I thought I had that down this time. I just once again want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and providing the townspeople with an opportunity to meet the candidates for school committee. And for those who are taking the time to watch this forum and engage at a local level, thank you. There is so much going on in our world right now. It's easy to be distracted from what's happening in our own community, but it's, local elections are a very important part of our democracy and they are integral to the workings of our town. When I decided to run for my first term of school committee, it was partly because my son had said to me, Mom, if you really want to change something, you should run for something. And I think of those simple words often and it really motivates me to keep working on behalf of our students and our community. It's really been an honor and a privilege to serve on the committee, not only working for the town, but most importantly, working for our students. The work has not always been easy and it's going to be incredibly challenging over the next three years. But at every step of the way, the work has been incredibly rewarding and incredibly worthwhile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to wrapping up this candidate's forum. And I'd like to start by thanking each of the candidates for being flexible and switching to a virtual candidate's night. And also thank the, for all of you just participating in the democratic process, as well as thanking the Hingham League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. We want to, I want to send a special thank you to Christine Wilk of the Hingham League of Women Voters who has acted as the sole timer and has been recording this. And without her help and her coordination, this would not have happened this evening. So thank you. I also want to thank Kate Boland of the Hingham League, Tanya Roy of the Wellesley League, and Bryn Gorman of the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts for helping us to work out the kinks before we sat down to, to do a virtual candidate forum via Zoom. For everyone, please remember to vote on June 27th. The polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Precincts 1 through 4 will be at the high school. Precincts 5, 5A, and 6 are at the middle school. You are asked to wear a mask and practice social distancing if you plan to vote in person. The check-in and checkout areas will have germ guards as well as individual pens that will be handed out at checkout and return, check-in, excuse me, and returned to checkout for sanitization. Absentee and early voting is available for all residents by mail. You may get an absentee or an early voting application at the town clerk's website. There will also be an explanation on that website of what early and absentee voting is with a PDF form that you can download for your application. If you don't have a computer, you can call the town clerk's office to have an application sent to you. Please encourage all of your friends and your neighbors to vote in this local election. It is a key. And as I like to sign off whenever I do Hingham and all my candidates forum, democracy is not a spectator sport. We all need to participate. So thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time this evening.